Thank you, ma'am. So we're calling to order the Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 session, work session of the Carlton City Council. Should we have roll call, please?
Mayor Linda Watkins?
Here.
Council President Shirley Wardmuller?
Here.
Counselor Kevin Skipper?
Here.
Counselor Jeremy Reddell?
Coming.
Here. Counselor Grant Erickson?
Here.
Counselor Carolyn Thompson-Riser?
Here.
Counselor David Samuel Hill?
Here.
All right, everybody is present in the county board.
Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none there.
We'll start with work session item, agenda items, discussion of council goal to housing and livability.
Mayor and council, this is a continued discussion about the council action item of identifying octaves to maintain and promote green space where practical and current and future updates of the development code. We've had several work sessions on this topic. And we're back for more requested information. And our city planner has a PowerPoint presentation he's going to go through with some more additional items. And as we continue our discussion, we can go through our park master plan that was requested, as well as some of the tabs that we request. Can I turn this over to you for your?
Oh, there it is. See? Listen.
You guys are good.
Bye.
Bye there. Okay. Are we ready to level this slide?
Bye, guys.
Well, the council should receive this as part of the packet of materials. From what I understand, green space, we had a, we've had a couple of sessions. April 14th, this is a slide from that work session at that time where we said what is green space and includes a number of things. Some examples that were listed in the slide there. Also, I explained that April 14th, how green space could also include some low impact design approaches mostly for treating stormwater. And that was a work session that was subsequently held at the port, exacted that, that the work session, as he's the expert on that topic. So what I understand is there's more interest in green space, maybe the next slide there, what about the greenways there? It's kind of another green space, but it kind of has a linear sort of theme to it there. Ask 10 different people what greenway, or greenway, and get 10 different answers. I think a couple of that chance appear have the Webster's definition on there. We go to Webster's on anything. Or Wikipedia. This is a person that has prepared several books on greenways. It's the author of Greenways in America, Charles Little, and gives a little bit more flavor to what, or a description of what greenways are. So he's prepared several books and people have quoted him on the definition of what a greenway is, a linear open space. So anyway, some photographs of greenways throughout the United States, next slide there. So, all right, that's good. So, greenways in Oregon. So, yeah, we have some examples of streets. Portland and Eugene have neighborhood greenways that are actually called such in their development codes and their TSBs. And they have some green in them. We'll talk about that in a minute. But, yeah, typically you see a, oh, Bear Creek got a greenway, was why I just was traveling up by five on, by Bedford area, you have that greenway. And of course, the Willamette River Greenway. Willamette River Greenway also is one of the 19 statewide planning goals. So that's why you're greenway all the time. What does it mean? Sometimes you see it codified or in various city comprehensive plans because they're required to. They're required, the city is located along the Willamette Greenway and they're required to have something in their comprehensive plan that says this is what, how we implement that. So I just, we're not located on the Willamette River Greenway, but next slide here, this is neighborhood greenways. But some cities, I mentioned Portland and Eugene as two cities that have the, have this, just as a, you'd have a local or a collector or arterial, those various typical classifications of streets. There are some cities that decide we want something more. We want neighborhood greenways in a street context, which is we want, I guess, kind of a landscape, landscape strip that's between the curb and the gutter. But also more emphasis on bicycle and pedestrian use of the street and the car is somewhat secondary to that. So you design it such that vehicles are slowed down and things like that. There's some things, there's some curve extensions, undulation, terrains, islands, that sort of thing that are part of that type of street design. Next slide. So does Carleton have neighborhood greenways? No, Carleton has the regular local collector arterial class streets identified in the TSB. You have a funding for TSB update. Select the consultant, you'll be going through that process. If you want to designate a new type of street system, a new label, something more than just the local collector arterial, that is something you can do. There is a plan, one of many maps, I should say, in the transportation systems plan, one showing bicycle and pedestrian priority routes. And that same plan evaluates those routes, existing improvements and whether they're poor or adequate. So anyways, that's, that's, that's the plan there. Okay, so the question here, what green does the TSB or the development code describe for streets? And I'll quickly answer that, it's not much. So this is apart here from the Carlton Transportation Systems Plan. This is existing text that I just kind of grabbed. And it's, and it's significant as it governs how streets are designed in the city of Carleton. So basically says landscape strips, if I can read it, buzzy in my glasses, but included as part of new street collectors standard, but are optional on the local street standards. Landscape strips are not required, keywords there or included as a standard on the rest of the roadway system. So that, that language there is important. We'll go to the next slide. So here it is shown in a, in a table form, basically showing five feet for landscape strip. Each column in the table there kind of shows, well, this is the pavement where this is the parking along here. I'll let, I think you may have seen this in review and development applications. But anyways, yeah, it just shows that five feet is optional, not required. And then next slide. And also, you know, cross sectional, so the TSB has cross sectionals just kind of showing that there's no landscape strip required. Just a different way of displaying information. Street trees are required for new collector streets. And thanks to the slide, I think, shows where those, yeah. So this is the future streets plan of the transportation systems plan TSB. And all I did was take a marker there, an orange marker, to kind of show where those collector streets are located versus the streets in yellow of the planned street. So all those areas have been developed since this, this plan, but it's kind of a question of, well, why certain streets in certain developments don't have the landscape strip between the curb and the sidewalk? It's because the TSB says so. It says it's optional, not required. And as far as remaining areas, the expectation would be with this plan in place, if it's not amended, you would have just these areas that are in, the streets that are in orange indicating collectors that have the landscape strip. Next, next slide. Back to, let's see, this is development code. And so development code has the same table that the TSB has. TSB governs and the, the development code implements. And so we have pretty much just the same information here. And what's shown highlighted, these standards shall be the minimum requirements for all streets. And where it's optional, then the no, no strip is required. Next slide. So, all right, here we go. Keep going. Get with that mouse. So, all right, so existing development code. We have a bunch of text here that's shown struck through, highlighted in yellow. And a little note there down in the southeast corner of the slide says, an initial draft of the code update. It shows the highlighted text above, recommended for removal as it simply explains the benefits of the landscape strips and not the standard. There's also that photograph is actually in the development code as well. So there's a lot of text in all of that highlighted area that speaks to the benefits of having a landscape strip. But there is no standard in there. So the, all of this text shown struck through, you have a, when, you have a consultant, P.J. and Jed, the consultants that have been hired to do an audit of the code in part for making sure the code has clear and objective standards and review of development applications. And so this is proposed by that consultant. I have gone through there as well as your staff, and I concur with the recommendation to remove this, this text. So eventually this has to go before technical advisory committee and then through public hearings and eventually the city council for, for adoption. But right now, the initial proposal for updating the code says, all of this stuff here is merely explaining the benefit of it. Maybe it goes somewhere in the body of the TSB. But as far as a standard, it's really, you just have the first sentence there saying where it's desired for the location. And the photograph really doesn't help. In fact, it seems it's almost sort of misleading as it's quite a bit wide there. Next, next slide. So I just thought I'd provide some examples of what other cities do. This is, I just use City of Eugene as an example there. This is from their TSB, just a comparative analysis, where they have planning strips that are shown more consistent with what the photograph shows there in the, what, the seven foot to eight foot range, I would, I would just sort of guess, and both sides. So that's just a comparative table. Next slide. And just, these might be more on the capital improvements of what Eugene is doing to add green to, to streets. This is a traffic circle that's shown there with some green in the middle. And here is raised crosswalks, landscape areas, it could be at an intersection. More on capital improvements to what can be done, median island there, some of that landscape as well. So what other greenways are possible? And this would be the, the non-street type of greenways. So not accommodating a vehicle. This figure here or plant map plan, it's a priority bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. TSB there shows a mixed-use path where the railroad right-of-way is, is located. And so that's great. That is acknowledging that as a path use. Not shown are other potential greenways along Yamhill River, maybe where the park is and Han Creek as well. So Parks Development Plan has some policies, not much. We'll kind of show a slide that shows those policies about bike and pedestrian pathways. So this is from chapter three of the Carlton Parks Development Plan 2020. And policies under goal three and policies three and four there, they speak to the importance of Han Creek drainage, significant natural resource, but encourages retention of land and around Han Creek. Floodplain is open space and future use as of pedestrian bicycle trail. So there's some thought process behind it. There isn't a kind of a plan of where that would go in, but they also have number four there. City recognizes importance of preserving the Union Pacific Abandoned Railroad Corridor and developing the right-of-way as a multi-use recreational trail in the future. So if policy three and four that speak generally about the Han Creek Floodplain as open space and future pedestrian trail, potential for the transportation system update to include maps and policies for this purpose. So other greenways that are possible, non-street, this is table 701 of the Parks Development Plan. And see what I wanted to say about this, it's, yeah, this says it's absent. Park classifications, mini and trail corridors that could be recognized and may reduce the acreage total needed to, to acquire in the year 2040 there. Again, so all assumptions on population and things like that, but yeah, that's, that's something that could be with a future update of the, of the development plan. Next slide. So I will sum up my part right here with just recommendations, TSB update. So that is something that you have selected a consultant and there's an opportunity now to sort of refine the scope of that update. I would recommend that you look to require landscape strips to, to streets or make it clear when and where it's optional. TSB update also explore creating new street classifications and no option. But so again, Portland and Eugene have created that, the neighborhood greenway type of street classification. Add new green pedestrian trails where possible, mentioned Han Creek as a possibility. Explore new maps graphics to clarify improvement standards. And then also examine existing policies, modify as necessary for a desired outcome. With the development code, ensure street standard consistency with the TSB. And this is kind of one of those areas where we have a lot of activity already. Development code updates, I mentioned the consultant that's been hired for that, and they've been hesitant to address the table in the development code. With that note that, well, maybe we revise the, the TSB for the table first and do a subsequent development code amendment for that table. But anyways, yeah, remove the text that explains the benefits to the landscape strip. Focus on the clear and objective standards of what you wanted to go with of it, how many trees are going to be, the planting size. Future parks amendment plan, not active now, but I always amend that of something. So refine existing policies in chapter three as far as the abandoned rail corridor to make it more linear park, explaining what might be desired for, for that purpose. Consider adding policies for mini parks, trails, corridors, because they're not currently mentioned in the Parks Development Plan. And then finally, update that, that table 701 to recognize other park classifications. So happy to answer any questions, council.
Doesn't some of these activities of green strips or whatever, doesn't that add some level of additional cost when developing an area? Because you're getting less houses in unless you're scrum, you're packing those houses in tighter to make up for the space that you're kind of taking away from the development?
It, it could be, there might be, yeah, I mean, it, yeah, I guess that's kind of to accommodate a little more space. Yes, conceivably, there could be less net block area. Or, I don't know if there is some big savings of of only, you know, gasoline vehicles that you're taking along and seeing what can be reduced to increase the the landscape strip. But a lot of those vehicle widths are fairly standard to accommodate the variety of type of vehicle. So probably not too much given. So yes, I guess that's a quick answer is that it could conceivably reduce what the net amount of units that gives us all the to put along.
And one possibility to cut down on the width of the stream, have the land or that green strip or whatever it is, is maybe look at having one of these streets. Because instead of having to allow for two cars passing each other, one, a one-way option one pathway, rather than have to loop, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, if it worked out. So, yeah, there's a lot of eyes, fire department and others that, yeah, but
Very understanding.
Yeah, but, yeah, great things to explore with the TSB update, that's the desire. The council will look at some areas for that purpose.
There's often trade-offs if you want green strip. Okay, what are you going to give up? Maybe you're giving up parking there. So you have a narrow or a street. So doesn't necessarily mean more cost, less homes, but it does mean trade-offs in other areas.
Very understanding.
Parking would probably be the one.
Yeah. Everybody would be, will sacrifice.
Well, those are the discussions, right? Which one do you want to prioritize? Sometimes you get
And then bringing back on the back of that. Do we want to be actively engaged with future plans? For walking paths along our waterways before somebody else tells us that we need to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The Willamette River thing, it sounds like somebody has come in, told those cities, you're going to, you're going to make this happen.
Yeah, the state has, yeah.
And, and at that point in time, it sounds like you've lost your, your city's control over that process to some extent.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, certainly having designated as a trail along this Han Creek, because it's, it's not right now. It may be that, that certainly affords the opportunity for somebody to look at it and say, how can I make the development such where it warrants for that as a trail and not a road? Or something. So it may be that we're not sacrificing anything. Also, you could say a policy that says, gee, we encourage the use of land development, concentrating development away from, or something like that. So there's, I think that there's a lot of policies, but making that clear as part of the comprehensive plan through the TSB is important as something point, gives me as a planner, something to point to and say, yeah, that, yeah, your, your plan has to incorporate the ability for, for this to occur. Maybe not be that the developer, not all the cases that developer has to provide it, but the plan has to be designed so it doesn't exclude the ability to provide that, by that desire in that area.
Hopefully the engineering perspective. So the, the creeks have other opportunities with regards to controlling stormwater and creating habitat. And you can even look at putting back native species that will enhance air quality and other, other aspects, not just green space. And so they are an opportunity, city, to jump on if you want to do that. If you obviously provide that green space opportunity, they have multiple effects.
Including having a healthier environment.
Okay.
For me, it's a real priority to have, to restore it, because I think there's some need for restoration, especially here on the, on the Yamhill. I'm not sure about Han Creek. And, and to have those walkways and to provide those enhancements that you're talking about, Gordon. And also I was looking in the back of, I'm not sure the end of what it is here, it has the list of all of these agencies that, you know, perhaps can provide some help. And I, I think there's, you know, at least some opportunities for us as a city to work, hopefully work with some of those agencies to, so they can provide support to us to, to do that, through that process. But it's a very, a real important priority for me, anyway.
The path of a, the best route, what I used about for the bicycles, can go in floodway. There's lots of examples out there. It's one of the few things that can go in the actual floodway. So that's, if it is that part of, of the creek there and Han Creek is encumbered by a, by a floodway, kind of a nice opportunity is you can't build there anyways. So it is one, one of the few uses really. Anything else, fences or, yeah, any, any sort of structure, it's, it's not allowed. But, yeah, yeah, there, there are other agencies out there that usually very supportive staff for that. Sometimes grants are available too. It's one of the grants that I like to go after, the ones that produce something that will, will be a benefit to the community later on.
I would like to, or I envision anyway, a walking path that, I mean, what's important for me and is more interconnectivity between where in the east, the JR Meadows subdivisions and to the northeast Carleton Press, you know, be more interconnected to the downtown and to this area, into the park here, through some kind of walkways that aren't necessarily on a street.
Yeah, I agree.
And that is one thing that Scott, Gordon, Tyler and I talked about after the last work session. That council had given us, we heard that it's not just about parks being green space, but it's about the. Connecting those crop spaces or other outer trees to the office screens. And so when we sat down and talked about this, we went out with some of the ideas of Honda Creek. I don't know if you wanna speak to that a little bit, because that was something we brought up on creek. And the greenway and as well as in the river and.
Right, so you have some natural pathways that. Will lend themselves to this one of the Honda Creek, you know, on the east side. And you already own some of that, already have a park. Uh, parks actually, three parks actually. On on creek that are not connected right now, but it would be.
The other two.
Well, there's the one on Seventh.
The mini park.
Well, on the north side. It, it's actually. And then there's a whole bunch of wetland in there.
Yeah.
And then there's the little pocket park.
Yeah.
J R one, and then in J R two, you got another park. It's right down and you got a trail right down there along the creek. So you have bits that could be connected. And I've seen other communities say, you know, we want that, that's part of our plan, that's gotta be in their plan.
Yeah.
And they want a trail along there, so the developers know that there's maybe some concessions on density to allow. That land to be. Given or needed to the city along the creek, along the floodway, maybe part of the flood plain as well. And you have it on this side as well, Yamhill River, then you have a park there that. Goes that way, goes north as well, then right through the middle, you have the railroad. County owns part of it. There's some private ownership, but that would be a great corridor for pedestrians and bike. People on bicycles to go north and south all through the city, they could get connected. To those other caskets, that would be.
Use it, use it for interconnectiveness within the city.
It's the Yamhill, the city limits end for the Yamhill River going south this way.
Pretty much the park.
Isn't it right here, just goes.
Gordon, could you also speak to your idea of mid block connections? Because we've talked about three basically north, south.
Right.
Potential greenways, but east west.
East west, so you know, east west, that can be. The way you design your streets, you could make, design some streets as pedestrian pathways. And you give up other things, make that one a pedestrian pathway, but there's this. Other idea that I've seen in other communities where. For instance, you have a, what I would call a long block, so. Your blocks are about two hundred and fifty feet. So if I went up here, you can see those are, there is a, a long block right there. There's no connection where a street thought to have been. That could have been a pathway right there, a walkway, right in the middle of that long block. And then you can do that in, in some of your development, if you got that long block. You split it up with a walkway halfway through, that can start giving you more pathways.
How wide are those mid block?
Typically, I've seen with twenty feet. Yeah, it gives, gives the ability to have a pathway plus some landscaping. And gives a little bit of distance from the property.
I absolutely liked the, the talk or the direction that that we're. Having here. Other cities, more in the metro area. Have these pathways, but they, they feel more like alleyways, there's no trees, there's no plantings, there's no.
Right.
And and it just felt, you know, and and this is from my childhood days, but it felt very dirty, very closed off. What you guys are talking about sounds worlds different and absolutely better.
Yeah, I remember growing up in Beaverton areas, we had some of those paths, but they were about as wide as the path.
About six feet wide, yep.
Six feet fence.
Yeah.
What folks have been doing more of, and I'm sure Scott's seen this, is you're making that wider. And you're making it more of a. Green space.
So you end up with green path, green and with property fences, whatever.
Yeah.
On each side, okay.
That's what I've seen in some places, Scott, you've seen those?
Well, yeah, it's, it's also to a pathway to decide, if you want multi, multimodal, that's one of those key words there. Multimodal means you're accommodating both bicycle and pedestrian. And usually it's ten feet is a minimum for that, but. I mean, some existing right of ways, if it's twenty feet, you've got room for landscaping on each side of that. The, what did you say, the sixty feet was the railroad right of way?
Yes.
So sixty feet, all you need for multimodal is ten feet. I think it's, and that ten foot is like a safety thing, I think it kind of based on some sort of standard, I can't think of. But lots of room to, to, to add landscaping in a right of way, if it's acquired by the city. Or in some way. But that's, but yeah, lots of that, it is kind of interesting there, that it goes right through town, in the middle of the town.
I, I guess my friendly projection is, I, I would like to see us do something better than the alleyways of. Beaverton and and other communities.
Yeah.
It was very good intention, however, it.
Yeah.
Just felt, always felt lacking to me.
Yeah, it was the first shot at it.
Yeah, we, we can absolutely do better.
But the railroad right of way is sixty feet, which gives you lots of room to do lots of things, that could be a linear park. Very easily.
I, I think it's wonderful park option.
But we face similar problems to the Carleton Yamhill. Trail that they're having to, to get that done in terms of like homeowners don't want to have a pet. That goes for their house, especially the new ones, like developments, I guess they wanna have a choice, but. If we're creating a new path in places that don't.
Yes. You, you can, but it's also already there and people already use it, yeah, so that's part of it.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah, there is, it's open, so at least the, the railroad right of way has had historic use to it. But yeah, there, there's some other, yeah, that's some of the. Yeah, the feedback that you would probably receive is those that don't want it to. Have it, people walk in what they see as a backyard or extended backyard or something like that.
Is that a common issue with other cities as well?
I, yeah, I'm trying to think of, have, have we had it, I, I, what, thirty years, I. That through a number of hearings and, yeah, it, it can't be something that people don't want. That's by the director of the city of Dallas where, no, this is where, hey, it's planned, you should have known. That it's, it's in a plan form, at least you haven't, that's a disclosure element, and anybody who's looking to purchase a property is. So, the, the, in part, the purpose of the plan is the disclosure element of it to those who wanna know. But that depends on the person, I think, it's a lot of times, it's, it's the person who values privacy over immunity benefit. Yes, so.
That's what fences are for. Well, I was thinking when I lived in Boise, in the north end, it was all pretty much. You know, a grid pattern. And the, the alleys, they, they did ten foot, what, probably ten, twelve foot alleys in there. Cause they, that's where they picked up the garbage too. And that's what we used for the trails to run back and forth around town, down in that area. And I don't think I ever heard anybody pitching it, complaining.
That was a different year and year.
Well, it was a different town, yeah. Thank you. I needed that today.
The biggest concern that I've, I've heard from my neighbors. Is that they are concerned about security issues and homelessness. So, and, and I think that a lot of our park policies address security issues. And deciding, I, I don't know what, what to call it nowadays, but we have policies to address those issues. That's where, when the initial concept was put out there. There wasn't any good information on how, you know, the pathways. Green spaces were going to be pleased and managed, now we do, you know, I feel like we're. Heading in a better direction. With, with our policies and stuff, so. That, that may put some of our residents' concerns. The rest.
We're also talking about a very localized idea, not something that's open to. The whole state.
And also, the rail corridor currently is open to anyone, you know, walking on it now and. People have walked on it, it's, I mean, if there were a, going to be a homeless issue there, I mean, it could happen now, whether we. Make these changes or not.
That you were looking on the screen at, that shows our current parks. With the rail border in black as well, so to the far left is lower park, Winnebago Park. In the middle, I noticed to be shocked, that's last park. Off to your right in the upper corner is Honda Creek. The middle square going south is J R one and the. Non-square in the very lower south squiggle, the oriental side is J R two. So, council Thompson, you had asked about a map of parks so that you could see. If where possibilities for interconnectedness were, and that's also what we as a team looked at. When we were taking in council feedback. And that's where. Gordon has brilliant ideas about greenways along Honda Creek, the corridor and the Yamhill River. And then some connections within neighborhoods for mid-block habits.
And my question is on the, on the Honda Creek. Pretty blue line in our book. Does the city own any of it, there's, I've heard something about, no, right down at the water, twelve inches each side, you know, or something.
Oh, where the state ownership is in waterways?
I, I don't know, I don't know anything about it, so could you enlighten me on who owns the land around Honda Creek?
Well, some of it is the city, some of it's private ownership, the, the state has regulatory. Purbi on, on grade.
Okay.
So.
Oh, because it's a waterway?
Yeah, because it's a waterway and because there's actually a lot of wells. There's a lot of wetlands right here. And here.
Yeah.
And here.
And so that's.
Probably down.
Yeah.
This area as well, this actually extends up here. Park, there's a trail that extends out there.
So does that regulatory status, does that basically protect those lands from? Developers and.
Yeah.
You know, private people going in there and planting invasive species and things like that. Or mowing or chopping or something like that.
Well, wetlands are protected, you wanna. Build in wetlands, you gotta go through delineations and you gotta go through mitigation. Flood plain, which is outside of the floodway, you can think of as the creek channel. Where the water moves fast, you can't build there. Floodway is above that where the creek is gonna flood and where the water is shallow and doesn't move very fast. Yeah, flood plain, you can build there. But there's criteria for building. Yeah, build above it, you gotta let the water still flow, and in fact, you can build it. Floodway is where the state has more regulatory.
Yeah. My other concern with floods, which is a concern, is also fires, and I see that these are. The possibility of being natural fire breaks, if we clean them up and maintain them as we've started doing on the. Rail corridor in the north section. And I think that our climate is going to get hotter and drier and I was very nervous, we've had. Two fires near that Hong Creek area, we've had one on Seventh Street, a house fire. That scorched the arboriding trees that were growing in their landscape. And it would have just been a few more minutes and it might have gone further. And the other one is on declaration, another house fire that comes on the back. So. I'm interested in fire breaks in our city. And I think that's a, a partnership here, flood and fire control in some of this. And keeping it native, native vegetation.
I have to agree that a properly managed green space will reduce fire risk.
Yeah.
Substantially.
And there is grants from the U S Forest Service now for small towns to. Uh, get proper arbor, arbor, arborist in to help clean your areas up. So I think we should maybe look into that. So, you know, that's part and parcel, I don't know when we would make trails or how we acquire the land to make the trails. But I think we can clean our vegetation up. Hopefully the citizens won't complain about that, they would, I think, want that, although the, the corridors and otherwise.
There are those.
Yeah.
Am I hearing a general agreement that you would like the staff to work with the development code in the T S B update? To include these greenways as well as these mid-block multimodal connections within developments?
Yes, I think so.
Contest is.
Is that really good?
I'm, I'm all for it.
Scott and Gordon, is there any additional information you need to help further that?
I, I would say that the other issue that's gonna come up in the T S P, which Scott already talked about, is the street design. And how we're going to do that, adjust that, and are we going to. Uh, look at green streets where there's greenways or pedestrian streets where. There's more emphasis on that, so at some point, we'll probably have to come back and say, okay. Let's talk about that direction and see how that, or then do these other things that we're talking about.
Are you talking, are you talking about these graphs?
Yeah.
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 I mean, and, and I was. I mean, and I was speaking a bit with Shannon about this and wanted to ask you because I'd like to see all these things that are optional, have them be required. However, I understand that there might be some trade-offs between requiring a developer to do that and S D C fees. And maybe you could speak to that a little bit.
Well, one of the things that you have to watch out for is you want everything and all of a sudden your street becomes a hundred feet wide and you don't get any development. So that that's, you know, some of the things that are optional, maybe is, okay, we're going to designate certain streets that are going to have this and we're going to create this pathway through the city. So it's not every street that has it. It's only designated one. So that's the kind of discussion. And S D Cs and those requirements are are separate. If if your code says this is what you're going to build, you don't get an S D C credit for building that. You just have to build it. So the S D C credits or the S D Cs are based upon, here's the future work that the city has to do. And here's the cost of it. Here's how much of that is for future growth. And that gets through calculations. That's how you develop your S D C amount, both in streets, water storm, wastewater, parks, the whole thing. So there's the the S D Cs and those requirements are exclusively, mutually exclusive. You say these are the requirements they just got to deal with.
Where the S D Cs came up in our discussion as a team, I believe, was about requiring dedicated park space and about whether or not that would reduce or get a credit for S D Cs.
Right. So that's a that's a more difficult one. And I would my recommendation would be for on the parks, have the park S D C because then you can use it at the park. If you require a developer of any development to give you some land for parks, then you got these little bits all over the city and it is not coordinated and not as usable. So that my recommendation on park S D Cs was, can you continue to have the park S D C and not not have a what would you call it, requirement for giving you land in each development? That that can get, I think, difficult for the city to
And I concur with that recommendation too. I've seen development plans where they get a very small sliver of of park development. Yeah, if the council says, no, hey, we really want to see it as part of each development plan, we'll go into depth in a portion of the development code that speaks to that. And we'll try to design some minimum widths for that and where it's desirable, we'll we'll try to. There's not a lot of city codes that have that. And I think a lot of councils have said, no, we'd rather take the money and apply it to our existing parks and the capital improvement associated with those parks.
And you can do a concerted planned projects rather than having a patchwork with little tiny
Yeah, that may be just utilized by that one subdivision to that. And then who takes care of it? Is it the city that takes care of it? Or is it a homeowners association that falls apart?
Well, that's what happened in Han Creek.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah, so that's that's a good example. With JR one, you have what would be a little pocket park that's just for that development that's not terribly usable. And look at the other big parks that you could do improvements to with the S D C money. So that you actually have both options right now that have occurred.
Does that S D C money have to be used for improvement or it can be put away where when property comes available, found for sale, the city could actually buy it and create a park?
It depends on your parks plan. So if your parks plan, it'll, your parks plan should have, just like any master plan, it says, here's what you're going to do in the future. And if part of that is, we need, I'll take some numbers here. We need half a million dollars to buy five acres. That's in your S D, that's in your capital improvement plan. That's S D C eligible. What it won't do is operation and maintenance.
The S D Cs.
Right. S D Cs you cannot use for operation and maintenance. You can use to expand your park system or improve your existing park system.
How is the money calculated from the development? Like, is that something we determine?
So the S D C is based on your master plan. So what will happen is like, you know, parks master plan, it says, here's our C I P. Our total amount is whatever it is, ten million dollars. Then that gets through some calculations, divided up, and you get a F P C amount per E D U. So that's equivalent dwelling unit. So think of a single home as a single E D U. So then when a developer comes in, you calculate how many E D Us they have. And that number times the S D C amount is how much they pay. So you could come in and say, I've got ten homes. That's ten E D Us, so ten times my F P C, that's what you want. You could come in and say, I'm doing a apartment and apartments are point eight E D Us. So you've got ten apartments times point eight, then there's your S P C in there.
It's typically part of the building permit cost. Yes, it's these in addition to you know, if I have something I can build a house.
Yeah, so when they build, they also pay all the S D Cs on all the developments.
I have a question about this page where you're suggesting striking this, which just really talks about the benefits of landscape strips. Is there some idea about including what you consider to be requirements as opposed to benefits? I don't know about requirements, that's the right word, but
It's so.
Standards, yeah, that's a better word.
Yeah. So I I mentioned, I went through it very quickly, but it's, you have a consultant that has suggested that striking out that link, that's comes from the consultant hired to do the audit to the development code to ensure that the standards that you have for development are clear and objective that go into the width required for a landscape strip. What you want to place in that with the number of trees. It gets into the very specifics. It the benefits might be good in, you know, maybe a policy or a purpose statement of the development code, but not in a standard. Where it's located right now is the body of a standard. So it can't, you know, it doesn't do any good and it could and it could be something that if the city said, well, all of this language in here means something. It it speaks to the benefit and therefore developer, you are required to provide a ten-foot landscape strip. Because there's also photographed in the in the code and see that photograph looks like it's ten feet. And therefore, it it's good. It doesn't work that way, the way state law too, especially for residential. It pretty much says your code must be clear and objective or it it's not really, it's not worth it.
So we need the actual, we need the actual numbers.
They need the actual numbers, the the actual, yeah, exactly.
I think that's kind of what I'm saying, but I've sort of just spoke, I mean, I understand removing this, but I just want to make sure we're somewhere including the standards or requirements.
So so what in there could be a standard, but this is the difficult part as it works in conjunction with the transportation systems plan. It may be sort of a hole there that, well, let's introduce that as part of the transportation systems work. And then there would be a subsequent amendment of the development code or concurrently with adoption of I I can kind of see, I don't know how they're going to work together. We'll have to talk about the timing of the two different consulting teams. And I haven't seen the timeline for the T S P, but yeah. But conceivably, they could go together.
Hold on, we have a counselor skipper. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
You're okay. Thank you. I haven't been waiting that long. I just wanted to jump in and see if there was any if there's going to be talk about the Mercury T M D L, stormwater detention and how this all relates to green, green space. I mean, it's, it's kind of hard to wrap my head around some point because there seems like there's so many different plans, the T S P, that the development code and the the stormwater requirements. And I'm just trying to see how those all relate. You know, it it's fun to talk about green space and trails and different options. But I'd like to make sure that we're keeping in mind what developers' responsibilities are for the upcoming mercury requirements and stormwater detention, retention, things like that. I didn't, I believe that was supposed to be talked about tonight. I just wanted to make sure we were still going to address that.
Pocket points on that, whenever you guys are ready.
Go.
No? Okay. So I don't know if this got provided in the package or not, but I have some basic definition or differentiation between detention and retention. So those are methods for slowing down the stormwater runoff. And and they will look visually very similar. So intention, you can think, think of a swimming pool. So that's your detention zone. Stormwater comes into it and starts spilling up. And in the bottom, there's a small pipe that comes out that lets water go out at a preordained rate. It's smaller than how fast it's coming in. That's detention. But it comes in, you hold it and you let it out at a slower rate. Retention will look very similar. You're going to have that pond, you're going to have the flow coming in. But the idea is that you retain some of that stormwater on site. And there's two ways of doing that. One of them is the bottom of your pond is open and water can infiltrate down into the ground. Meaning it gets retained on site instead of being taken off. And the other way is your pipe out isn't at the bottom. It's somewhere up top in the middle. And at the end of the storm, instead of getting rid of all the water in the pond, you only get rid of some of it. Some of it stays in the pond, so you retain it. So that's the difference between the two. Detention, you got a pond to store it. Everything comes in fast, goes out slow, and at the end, your pond's empty. Retention, still got that tank, water's still coming in fast and it's going out slow, but some of that's retained on site through infiltration or a permanent pond. So that's the difference between those two, yes.
How many detention ponds do we have and how many retention ponds do we have?
In town right now?
Yeah.
I had that number. We don't have very many. And I don't think we have
There are eight detention facilities posted on your slides.
Okay, eight. I don't think any of them are retentions. The problem with retention in the car is if you're going to infiltrate, you got to have the right type of soil to infiltrate.
It's hard to do that with water.
Right. The retention doesn't work as well here. Okay, so that's the difference between those two. And right now, our code says we only have to do detention in certain situations. One of them is your downstream capacity of your pipes is insufficient. So we're going to flood your pipes. So you put in detention so you don't have to upsize any of those things. Large parking lots and commercial development. That's where it's required right now. So the Mercury T M D L's requirements, there's six chain requirements or areas that you have to address. And everybody across the entire state is the same sex. Doesn't matter if you're a town of fifty or a town of two million, it's the same sex. Pollution prevention and operations. So think about street cleaning, cleaning out your catch bases. Public education and outreach, the educating the the public, educating them to know what's going on, what they can do. Public involvement, so that creating that involve with perhaps updates to the code or the design standards other ways to involve them in stormwater. Detection and elimination of illicit discharges. So that's somebody that just changed the oil in the car and went over and dumped it in a catch base. That's an illicit discharge. So you got to have your code set up so that you can do something.
I was going to say, is that a criminal event? Intentional discharge of oil into a catch basin?
It's, I don't know if you call it a criminal, but but your code does say that you're not supposed to do that and, you know, you can get the hand slap for doing that and have to go clean it up. They're supposed to be escalating repercussions. Our code doesn't know that right now. That's something in the future that we have to do. Construction, sorry, law control or erosion control. That's number five. We require that now anyway. So the part that is has to do with detention is the last one called post-construction stormwater management. And so what that actually is, is treatment and detention. And for communities, Carlton size, you don't actually have to do anything for nine years about that. Carlton said, hey, we're doing our code update. Anyway, we're going to do it quicker. And so our code is and design standards are going to be updated to require treatment and detention. And we're looking at potentially a trigger, like, hey, if it's a single house, we're not going to make you do it. But if it's anything over, I think it was five hundred square feet of new impervious area, you got to do something. I think it was five thousand, excuse me. So that's like a duplex or a three, three lot partition. They still don't have to, anything above that, you still have to, you have to do some sort of treatment and detention. So that's where I suppose you'd go. Any questions on that?
I found one. Excuse me, go ahead, Kevin, sorry.
Yeah, just a little follow up. So like, I I see what you're saying, Gordon, there, we're going to require treatment, require detention. We're going to allow for We're gonna require treatment, require detention, we're gonna allow for uh, lid, you know. Doesn't that kind of relate to what we were kind of talking about with some of the screen space? Um, you know, traffic design, traffic control plan things. Can you speak to that? Like, it seems like they kind of need to coincide a little bit. Like, we can't put in the development code. We would like, you know, new streets to look like this. If it doesn't meet the code changes for the TMDL, that makes sense.
Well.
Or is that something you guys would look at and the planning commission looks at on a case by case basis?
No. So i- if we're looking like at a greenway or uh, street trees and landscape strip, that's that's green infrastructure. That's that's separate than detention and treatment. So the amount of detention and treatment is based upon your impervious area. So think of asphalt, concrete, the roof of the house. So the more impervious area you have, the more detention and treatment you require. If in your development, you're putting in green space, which is pervious, that's going to reduce the amount of detention and treatment that's required. And that's just a calculation they'll go through. Um, that's in a typical stormwater report. They look at impervious area, impervious area, and that's just part of the calculation. And if we have more green space, that just means they have more pervious area and probably less detention and treatment to do. So that that all gets wrapped into uh, your stormwater report. So they're not mutually exclusive. And a detention pond or some of the treatment facilities definitely are green spaces. Um, they're not what I would call usable, meaning it's not a park. It's not places where people can go and play or hang out because if it's a detention pond, it's gonna get flooded. If it's a treatment facility, it's very specifically designed with specific plants that are treating the stormwater. So you you don't want people tromping through there. So while it provides green space, it's it's not usable green space. Hope that answers what you were asking.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so you've got the Tetra Tech um, information in here?
Is this uh, that I just talked about?
I don't think there's, it's that, but you've got something that looks like this.
Oh, that was the, that was the uh
From the last time? Yeah.
Yeah, the time before, I said I sent this to the city. I don't know if it got put in the package, but it certainly could be sent out. It's just a description of detention versus retention and the six points of the mercury TMDL.
So just kind of a
It's just a quick summary.
That quick summary is extremely useful to any future plannings.
Yeah, um, and so, yeah, that could be it's only like a page and a quarter, so it's not
And it doesn't sound very complicated once you put it down to a page and a quarter.
Right.
So, thank you.
Anything else? Questions, comments, thoughts?
So what, over the last few work sessions, what we've heard um, from council to further their obtaining their goal of promoting green space is for staff to look at drafting language for preservation of healthy trees and development. Um, with that updating the street tree list, the planning commission's provided a recommendation and that's being further reviewed by other agencies. Updating the planting strip or landscape strip guidelines um, to support street trees and utility easements. Uh, language requiring removal of invasive species and planting natives to encourage benefits such as fire resiliency and pollinators. Incorporation of L I D into the development code, which is what Cory was just speaking to. Today, looking at um greenways for north, south, as well as mid-block pathways um, that are wide and landscaped to provide natural fire breaks as well as multimodal um, transportation options and connections throughout the city of Carlton. Did I miss anything? With those points and staff going to look at drafting language for the development code as well as integrating work into the T S P update as needed, does that meet council's goal of identifying opportunities to maintain and promote green space in current and future?
Shannon, in that list, did you mention the walkways, pathways along the creeks?
The greenways, correct.
Okay, alright.
Do you have alternative street standards?
Um, I have it as a note I didn't Would that be in the development code or the T S P update or both?
Both, yeah.
Street standards. I have designed streets for pedestrian pathways. Yeah.
So, sounds complete to me.
Did you have a comment?
Oh, no, I just
Oh, you looked like you were getting ready to say something.
He heard the next part, is that staff draft language.
We all shudder when Shannon says that.
Good for you. Keeps your mind active.
The shuddering or the draft? So do those points, she, what council was envisioning when you developed this goal? I albeit you still need to see the draft language, you need to massage it. But do those points kind of capture the core, the essence of what you were looking for?
I think so, yeah.
Counselor Skipper?
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Everybody else?
I'm, I'm very happy that we're not going to be building alleys and there's actually greenways, so that's I'm, I'm very encouraged. I think that adds value to what we have.
For the sidewalks, do we need to make a decision on what we want? Like, I assume we need to have um, some type of priorities or locations that we want certain things. And so you heard, or is that something we want to decide later? I don't know if we're clear on that.
That goes through the T S P, so I think that's more to discuss. Once we get those folks on on board, I think there's more discussion that needs to happen about pedestrian and alternate street standards.
And that would, that would be looking at how to make our feeder streets work better and our side streets.
It's certainly part of it.
Okay.
And Glenn Gordon had talked about the T S P update as well as our development code update. And right now, Three J is the consultant for the development code updating comprehensive plan update. And we had asked Three J to slow down a bit because it's supposed to be completed in October. One, to allow for these council discussions, but also to allow staff enough time to review um, the amount of material that is being proposed as updated through the guidance provided by staff's input into what Three J was proposing. And so we are having our next meeting on Thursday in order to, it's our first meeting after staffs had an opportunity, you had more influence from council. And on Thursday, we had an opportunity to do staff The T S P update, we have gone through um, and we have gone through that. And we have gone through their consultant selection process with uh, they took a lot of input from the city about what we wanted to see as far as a consultant's focus uh, for the T S P update. And um, that focus was taken from council input as well as team input. Um, and so we were pretty strong on some of the points of what we wanted to see. Um, they have a number of consultants that can bid on a project like that. Through that, we then evaluated them and the team got to see some of those and provide feedback. And they just went through negotiations with the T, the number one selected T S P consultant. And we are hoping that that contract will be finalized in time to update your draft over. And then that process moves at a timeline from there.
Is there anything else? Meeting closed. To adjourn, second? All in favor? Okay, we will reconvene in ten minutes. Start this September fifth uh, twenty twenty-three meeting of the um, Carlton City Council. Uh, could you call the roll call, please? Here.
Council President Shirley Ward Mullen.
Here.
Counselor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Counselor Jeremy Brandell.
Here.
Counselor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Counselor Carolyn Thompson Riser.
Here.
Counselor David Samuel Hill.
Here.
All counselors are present and accounted for.
Thank you. Could you join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
I have two minor additions, uh, mayor. Uh, one is to update on the cycle organ, the change and uh, updating the meeting.
Okay.
They'll go after the rail corridor.
Alrighty, okay. Um, let's see, are there any ceremonies, appointments or announcements? I think we're okay. Which brings us to citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state your name, street address and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. We start with items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments on an item that is not on our tonight's agenda?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okie dokie, on to um, items that are on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments, questions about an item that is on the agenda?
I would actually like to introduce myself and ask a question. My name is Kevin Stuck. I live at five thirty North Cooch here in Carlton.
Good evening, welcome.
How are you? First of all, I I would uh, thank all of you for the great work you do. I I was listening to the early part of the console and uh, the hard work you do and I'm great appreciation. I love the town. Um, real quick, I I want to introduce, so I'm uh, the home that was in the air first, I don't know if you saw the house that was in the air a while back.
Oh, yeah, the one that was elevated, yeah.
So I'm, I'm near completion of that. So I'm a long fifth generation Oregonian. Mom was born in Gasto and my dad grew up in Gales Creek, um. You know, um, we are long term, but I grew up, I left out of college, moved to California and San Diego and I've moved back. So I have a vacation rental here, which would be a retirement for home, but also a short term rental um, that I'll be doing in combination of it being uh, a vacation home for myself. So in the past, when I was listening to the council talk about short term rental, I I wanted to to ask or or bring to light that what I saw in the last part of this meeting was a lot of con- conversation around data and facts and plan. But I found the conversation about short term rentals was seemed more kind of general and concerns about about the impact of that to the community and wanting to maintain the great community of Carlton. And and what I would ask is that we would take a look at the organization, you know, at the city level here in regards short term rentals. I work in consulting performance management. There's an adage that you can't manage what you don't measure. So what is the plan for short term rentals? What are the metrics that you want to manage? What are the reports that you have backward? You know, back to the community in regards to occupancy, number of of rentals, uh, police reports, complaints, all those things that you were concerned about. In addition to that, taking a look at other wine communities that how they're managing their short term rentals. And oftentimes, I grew up on the Oregon coast and we see the impact of of the short term rentals on the coast when the weather's warm and all the horror stories that come out of Manzanita and I grew up in Astoria and other towns. But this is a unique community. And so I believe it's a vital part of the community to bring tourism, the right type of 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 guests into the community to enjoy not only the wine community, but the Christmas celebrations in the great community. And the the short term rentals are an important part to that. I I was a little concerned in the last time I heard the meetings that there was broad generalizations without facts around some, I almost felt kind of finger pointing at uncertainty and concerns about short term rental. I'm happy to participate and contribute uh, my insights and help around what are measures that we want to have and what's planned for the city in regards to short term rentals to make it a wonderful part of of this community and then provide facts to the citizens who are concerned about losing Carlton's special aspect because of them. So that's, that's all I wanted to do, introduce myself. And again, thank you for the great work you guys do in the city council. But I think short term rentals and mainstream and the wine community is a vital thing. I I grew up in a loggia. My dad was a timber faller and I see the mill towns without the vibrancy of 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 having, you know, tourism, small great towns like Sweet Home and other places and down in Medford and other areas that turn into really tragic towns. And so I think this town has such, I I'm here by choice. I love the town. Um, and so I'm just saying that let's put a plan together about short term rentals. Let's get good facts and good strategy around it. And uh, I think it could be a wonderful part of the community.
Great, thank you very much. Um, let's see, if there, if you want any follow up with anything, uh, please contact city manager Bo Kair. Um, and we'll let it go. That's usually the end of the discussion on, at this time.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for um, coming by. We appreciate it. Alrighty, um, consent agenda, do, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have questions on the consent agenda.
Okie dokie. Counselor Brandell.
So page one one forty-six account lighting the personal services. Well, I see here this of a pure amount of forty-nine thousand, we have budget thirty-five for the year. So you're negative forty-one percent. Do we have any explanations about?
Yeah, Counselor Brown Dell, this is Christie. Your room's too packed, so I can't come in, so I'm just gonna uh, talk to you over Zoom. Um, when we do the lighting or when we budget, we often do not even have any totals. We're doing our best guess at that time of budget. Um, the lighting came in slightly higher, but it's showing higher right now until our donations are received. When our donations are received, that'll take it down. No other monies will hit that account, so it's not, it's a one-time bill. A lot of our bills are just once a year, not monthly. So you'll see that number reduced as um, the businesses donate and as um, our citizens donate, which we get every year.
So donations come in through the whole year?
They come in through the season. So right now, we um, are asking the businesses that part of the increase was some bistro lighting and getting their participation in that. And then um, during And then during the season, we have a Q R donation code. Last year, we received over seven hundred dollars. That will offset, that's just citizens walking through the park. And then we often go out for grants, so it's a preliminary number at this point. But that is what it costs to C and D.
Christie, you said to C and D, so that lighting that we're referring to is not street lighting. It's a very specific type of lighting.
It is a very, it's a very specific lighting. They had an increase in costs. We're not increasing any lights in the park because of the increase of park increasing costs. And it has to do with the labor increases that these landscaping firms and people that have manual labor. It was a significant change. At this point, but we did not have that number at the time of budget.
Okay, so C and D landscaping does our Christmas lighting as well as we're looking, as she said, to incorporate lighting downtown right now with the street trees that are lit on Main Street. But those are obviously hit by trucks quite a bit, so they've been a maintenance issue. So we're looking at something more of a bistro lighting of having some canopy type lighting to encourage business solicitation at night, make a warm welcoming environment. And so that's the specific type of lighting that C and D does for us.
Are those donations, like you specify how much you're trying to get from the business or is just more on there?
It's on there. Some of them have, some of them have more fiscal. They have the ability to pay more. Some of them run on a shoestring budget and we leave it up to them. Not last year, the previous year when we requested, we got over five thousand. And then some of this will be community outreach, so. But it still will not put us over in material and services.
Do we ever go out for bid to? It's, you know, more than just one company. Seems like C and D has been doing it.
That's a very good question. So we did this year, once we got the cost, go out. And C and D actually is, it's a, they charge per square foot of lighting. And so we contacted some Portland companies. There was one Salem company, but they were almost triple. And the Portland company could not offer any features, but they could do lighting, but they were still a little bit more than C and D. But we did go out once we got the bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you have, are you had?
I think you're looking for page one forty-eight. You have a question about the tree services for the arborist?
Yes.
So on that particular case, it's again. Our public works director determines how much do we think we're going to do for tree arborist work. And so they went to do Winneburg Park this year after some heavy branches fell and a three day project turned into five. So we had diseased trees that we had to remove and it was an unanticipated expense.
If you remember, we had several large limbs going down in Lower Park and what appeared to be healthy trees were not. And so that added to unexpected.
Do we have regular tree inspections on our city property to try and anticipate? Okay, we do. Thank you.
Yeah, they come in a couple of times a year.
Yes.
This, yeah.
Is that something that we should have a little more wiggle room in the budget? Especially services going up so much like.
We try to, but we. We try to be prudent in our, so what we'll do at budget season, we'll look how much it is. Then we'll talk to the public works director, what does he think's gonna happen? But just like when the ice storm hit, there's public works and city things breaking can happen in a moment's notice. And it would be nice, we do have wiggle room as far as we have contingency if we go over that we can move our appropriation. It's not a fiscal cost to the city. We have contingency for these events. And then every year we take a look at the line items, what went over, what went down. Like when we do budget, we don't even have our health insurance costs. We don't have our PERS. We don't have a lot of these things. It's your best guess. The city has been very good about coming really close. In particular, I know that you right now, we're looking at some negatives, but often we come, we get more revenue than we're anticipating to. So I was thinking about this today when Mr. Counselor Brandal reached out. And I thought maybe if the sum nominally happens, I don't know if you'd want like a small fiscal report. But like the next two that we're going to talk about, it's just a temporary negative. It's going to be moved. But I don't know if you guys want those details at this point, so I'll leave that as council to decide. The next one is on page one fifty. There was a question about health insurance and it's a valid question. There was a Scribner error in the appropriation. So that is why that's negative. And we're in the middle of audit right now, so it'll probably be repaired out of there in the next month or two. I don't want to touch anything until the auditors are done and we're in draft right now. So that was a Scribner error. And then the last one on page one fifty-one, there was a question about engineering services because we're in month two and we were going over it. I did go take a look at the engineering services because we've had a lot of sewer breaks, but that isn't the case. There was actually some project money in there that's going to be moved to into the capital improvement fund, so that will remedy itself. Other than that, did you have any other questions?
When you say both, I guess I need to understand better budgeting and governmental accounting, but when you're saying both. Are you saying you move those amounts to a different budget account? And if you do, why, why, why are those amounts moved before the end of the month? Why? Like for your financial accounting, when you look at a month, you look into closing a month and having accurate numbers for that month. But if we're looking at months this month and then they change the next month or the next two months, we don't have an accurate ratio. If that makes sense.
I understand what you're asking, but in like for this case. So when I review it, the end of the month came on the Labor Day weekend and the report got printed before the end of the month even occurs. So we don't even get it for this, in this particular case, we go through a line by line. It's hard to explain. We go line by line to see, we do have some miscodings from. Sometimes admin staff doesn't understand and so goes into a wrong place. We are very diligent about catching it. And I can tell you that it already looks like we're going to have zero findings again, because when we do find errors, we always have audit statements to go behind them. But. Right now, the staff is handling an immense load. So if you see things, so I'm very happy with the questions because I can go take a look at it and I saw that part of a project got put in there. But I can't, we can't take staff to task on it because they're human. And so we go forward and we move it, but that's why we get audited once a year and they go through, they've spent all, two weeks ago. A week sitting here in here going through all the boxes, all the checks, all the cash receipts. So as you see these things, feel free anytime to reach out. We will take a look at it. But it's not going to be a hundred percent perfect.
So are you saying that we don't have enough staff time to review all the, all the numbers before the month ends? Or are we printing this report before the month ends?
So.
It's being printed before the month ends because your council pack, you're meeting the first Tuesday of the month. And we're printing them a week ahead of time. So most of the time it's being printed before the month ends.
It's just timing, but your questions are critical because you had a question the month before and I took a look at it and it was on air on, someone coded it improperly. We fixed it and moved it, so I commend you for taking a look at it and we appreciate it. And it just helps us before the, before, as we keep going. Usually we do it quarterly, but it's just keeping us there now.
The other part of this too is if you'll remember from budget committee meetings is the state looks at the more general categories like, I'm using the wrong term, Christie, I'm sorry. But.
It's alright.
This is a debt service and they're looking at those categories and whether or not we go over a certain percentage of those categories. They don't look, and I'm going to exaggerate here for just purpose. They don't look if we had a line item on pencils of whether we bought two extra pencils or something. They look at the larger line of materials and services. So that they recognize we have some wiggle room if we need it. So they can make that great line item.
No, that's correct, because actually the city can choose not to have any line items. We use line items to help us try to gauge how we're going to go year to year. We could just bring to you personnel services, material services, transfers, capital outlay. And tell you what's included in that. But we have long, a long time ago set precedents to try to be as accurate as we can in our budget work. But by law, we do not have to have line items.
So we could simplify this budget.
We could simplify it. It might be more, it might. Be easier for the citizens to understand if it was simplified. But if you came to me and said, why are we tight on material and services in general fund? A lot of times it's easier to have the line items to see what's going on, like the tree arborist and then, you know, knowing that we had those diseased trees of unexpected expense. That's a council decision. I don't add extra accounts. I have just, in fact, I've, every year I simplify it a little bit more because they had like uniforms. They were spelling too many details out and it's too difficult. But I don't know if that helps you or not, but the reason we never have audit findings is we don't go over in our object classifications. And we are really good with our, for a small city, they're highly impressed. How good we are with internal controls. Nothing happens without another set of eyes looking at it, viewing it, signing off on it. Not even for me. Shannon has to sign off anything I put my hands on.
There was also something we got complimented on during the financing process for the civic center was our, seeing how much was available on our website.
And I, not many people ask me about the financing. I know you guys get the audit reports, but it is. It is important to me. I love people coming in. I have once Counselor Skipper had a few questions. It's so nice because. I live it, but a lot of times when I talk numbers, people kind of roll, their eyes roll up in the back of their head. No one's, I'm not the interesting person in the room for my job. But I welcome anytime you guys have questions. So I, I really encourage it because just like last month, Counselor Brandal had a question. And so I could catch an error that early rather than at the quarter.
Thanks, Christie. Counselor.
Just a really quick comment. I appreciate seeing these numbers and, and I really appreciate. The openness and the transparency that you have both with the city council and the community that we serve. That is very, very important to, to at least me. The transparency and openness indicates that, that there's a very strong intent to do things right, so thank you.
You're very welcome. And then also on a sidebar note, for some of you are new, you might not know this, but we do have a transparency portal. Where all our money and all our revenue is posted every day. You can see it real time. So I'm, I'm really, it's one of the least visited places on our analytics on the website, but I love the fact that it's there. Because we want you to see it at any time.
Thanks, Christie.
You're welcome.
Counselor Brandal, any? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hi, Kevin. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks. Alrighty, on to ordinances, resolutions, discussion, and action items. Item A, Vacation Rental Ordinance twenty twenty-three, seven four five, first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, after a series of lots of questions, the ordinance is kind of new and reflects the changes that the council wanted to see in the point of mental policy.
Is there any? Question on this or is there a motion?
I would, Mayor, if I may, I would just like to thank the city attorney for providing the process for the adoption of the ordinances. And I would urge council that we, we follow his recommendation for, again, what we're kind of speaking to tonight about the full transparency. Of allowing the first reading and then waiting for the second reading for the community to be able to provide any needed input for the following month.
I agree with Counselor Skipper. You guys should always listen to me.
Thanks, Kevin.
And again, we just had input of a citizen tonight about it, so that citizen can look this document over and. Perhaps we can have more discussion.
I strongly agree with that.
Okay, having said that. Do we have? Now I have to find out, I have to find my text here. Thank you. Is there a motion? To. To authorize the reading of the. Proposed ordinance by title only or? In its entirety?
On page one fifty-six, number one. So I moved that the city council authorized the reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven forty-five, amending chapter seventeen dot one two five. Of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to vacation rental rules by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven four five and ordinance amended chapter seventeen point one two five of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to rules for vacation rental dwellings.
What do I do now?
You'll just follow up with the second motion? Yes, is there a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-seven?
Is there a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance? Seven forty-five, twenty twenty-three, seven forty-five. Amending chapter seventeen point one two five of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to vacation rental rules.
I make that motion. To that the city council should accept the first reading of the ordinance twenty-three, seven four five, amending chapter seventeen point one two five of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to vacation rental rules.
A second. Let's see, we need a roll call vote on this.
Alright, Counselor, Council President Shirley.
All right, councillor, council president Shirley Ward Mullen, how do you vote? Councillor Kevin Skipper, how do you vote? Councillor Jeremy Brandal, how do you vote? Councillor Grant Erickson, how do you vote? Councillor Carolyn Thompson Riser, how do you vote? Councillor David Samuel Hill, how do you vote? Mayor Linda Watkins, how do you vote?
I abstain. I have a conflict of interest on this one and I abstain.
Are these ordinances available on our website for citizens or residents? People who have concerns about it to review it?
Yes, the packet is available on our website, so they can read it verbatim.
Thank you very much.
And once they're adopt adopted, they are on the municipal code site. It lists all of the ordinances you you can read the text by ordinance.
And I am very impressed that the city has updated that from the first time I looked at it a few years ago.
Alrighty. So that moves us along to start vacation rental drilling units. We are back to keep bouncing back and forth. All right, we are back to item B, parking ordinance update.
It is page one sixty-seven, and your agenda says one fifteen.
Okay, yes, so this is the parking ordinance update first reading.
If you, Mayor, Mayor and Council, this is the perfect one, we said it has to be drafted based upon what you reviewed at the last work session from the view of Ben's um, parking regulations, would be a three, if you want to.
This, if if you all will will remember, this is essentially just adopting what the bend um code regulation regarding car camping. Which is, I acknowledge, not the preferred phrase, but then you know what I'm talking about when I say car camping. But it's really um, geared towards addressing the concerns that we all spoke about, and that can be present with folks, um, either if they are RVs or vehicles, um, accumulatively definitely on there. Car RVs dumping inappropriate stuff into our system, so it is not a criminal matter. At least not at first. How bad it gets might might get that way. But so, um, the attachment to Exhibit A to the ordinance is establishing a new section in our code to adopt those provisions.
Um, is there a motion to authorize the reading of the proposed ordinance by title only? Oops, you had a question?
Hmm, I was just gonna motion.
Oh, okay, go for it.
It is moved that the city council authorized the reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven four six, adopting and establishing chapter eight point one five of the organ of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to the use of vehicles for shelter and or sleeping by title only.
Is there a second?
My second is.
Okay, all in faith. All in favor? We've got Tyler.
No, I'm the one that has too many pages, I even have little sticky notes on the important ones. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven four six and ordinance adopting chapter eight point one five of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to vehicular camping.
I move the council accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven forty-six, adopting and establishing chapter eight point one five of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to vehicle use for shelter and or sleeping.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call vote please.
Council president Shirley Ward Mullen. Councillor Kevin Skipper. Councillor Jeremy Brandal. Councillor Grant Erickson. Councillor Carolyn Thompson Riser. Councillor David Samuel Hill. And Mayor Linda Watkins.
Are we done with those now?
Next one will be done.
Well, for the moment, excuse me, thank you. I stand corrected. Yes, item. Well, page one seventy-one, the rail corridor cleanup project update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council, Morgan, could you please bring up the four point five? As you are aware, councillor Erickson arranged a corridor cleanup uh, for two days in the month of July, correct?
And I thought it would be beneficial to create like after action report, a short one, that we would like to share with the commissioners as well. But we wanted to share this with you, just a couple of the pictures of the equipment and the people that were working in what you won't see in these pictures is actually the hard work at dawn ahead of time by the mayor or council president and comes to Thompson Riser looking for nesting birds and making sure we did not disturb the nesting birds while doing the recording.
Well, we had some great help from local from Karen and
So you can see how overgrown it was on the northern section of the trail. And then this is some of the work that was being done to chip up all the excess branches. What you're seeing there is a huge pile of brush that was taken out, those oak trees that are now standing there and actually have a chance to thrive and become the natural savanna that we have in this area. Uh, they were all overtaken by invasive species, which is what you see those piles of debris are. As they were all invasive tree plant matter. Uh, and what councillor Erickson was able to arrange is for this company to come in and actually chip that material and spread it along the corridor to further discourage vegetation from coming up.
Then we received two more car closed and bark chips that were spread out, scattered around.
Because there has been some commentary about fire danger of bark dust. Can speak, can somebody speak to that?
That was actually raised uh, to the council as well as the county commissioner. And the county commissioner uh, didn't come out with the Mitchell Fire Chief. And the Mitchell Fire Chief, we remember the county parks director. And what was reported to us is what we also knew and were aware of, is that the Mitchell Fire Chief stated that if you're gonna get a fire there, it's gonna smolder on the ground. Much unlike what the vegetation that was piled up, that if it caught, it was gonna catch into the crowds of trees. The ash was more likely, the sparks were more likely to transfer to fall sooner by. But the bark dust, if it does catch on fire, it would more smolder than it would actually flame up the vegetation.
I just, you know, saw that and I just want to, you know, get some sort of feedback about.
Those bark tips that were spread all around there are basically the same thing that called done for years around our home, red bark dust. Same products, different product we were getting were all the, all the different types of trees that have just fur bark dust, you go down to some places.
So I have another question, when you remove this, all these invasive species, so now that we have it out of there, is there a little chance that that's gonna, you know, come in and reestablish itself, or is it pretty much gone?
It's a maintenance issue, man.
But I mean, that invasive species could not come back there since we've removed it?
It could still come back. Yeah, it's it's been there longer than we think enough, so it'll be a consistent maintenance issue.
It's in the roots of Oregon.
It will need to be a continuous program, even one safe for fire danger with cleaned up a lot of that at this point in time. Um, there's still more work to be done, there is another work day.
Councillor Hill?
Yes. I served on a fire department in the Navy, I also served on a volunteer fire department after getting out of the Navy. And there's, I I'm I'm gonna say that there's, you, we usually don't have fireproof, we have fire resistant. We took what could have been an explosive fi- fire situation. Grass layered with brush, layered with trees. And now you have mulch. Mulch has a hard time getting oxygen into it, so you've take essentially taken your fuel source and lowered its ability to be fueled by oxygen. And you've created a a now highly defensible space to fires. This number one is amazing, number two, all the hawthorn trees that you have taken out of there and all the garbage brush, thank you. It now looks uh, reasonably attractive, the oak trees and the trees that had birds left in them. Um, thank you. Uh, we're being very, very responsible in my opinion. And and those who have questions or or who have uh, concerns about it, I would invite them to to ask the questions. To go down and see the difference that has been made, because it's it's a large difference. I've, I live close to the trail, I don't live, I'm not butted up to the trail. Corridor trail, I'm sorry, that green space thingy. But it it is now a very low concern. As where before, it was a high concern for being a potential disaster, especially if fire was to get started back in there, so I I wanna thank you for for the hard work of of our volunteers. It's appreciated.
But we have uh, first weekend well, maybe twelve.
We had twelve, uh, we had over twenty volunteers that's donated over to hundreds of hours, and the businesses themselves have donated we were asking five thousand dollars worth of equipment and time and labor.
Yeah, they were.
That's amazing equipment.
Grant did an amazing job on recruiting help.
Now, some of what you see that we're calling interesting signs. We have some neighbors that have encroached into the corridor, and so we are working with the county on some of those approachments and some no dumping signs, because some of them also have been dumping their yard debris quite a bit, and in some cases very scarily lighting it on fire. So we found burn rates. Not only was it vegetation that had been dumped, but you can see there was all manners of other materials, potting pots, uh, there was concrete in there, there was old, uh, what was it, cut up tree that was rotted.
Rotted trees, metal, scrap iron, uh, not one picture in the center there, I didn't know that you found that, but the gun case.
Holy smokes. So not only is, it was empty.
Thank goodness.
Um, so not only is this uh, cleaning up for fire safety, but it's also for mischief. For people who may have less than honorable intentions.
Yeah. And then at this, after the second cleanup day, I went back with a week, week and a half later with a tractor and a hog mower, a brush mower. And mowed both sides of it from the north, all the way down to the uh, Sockville property. And well, as you can see in that picture there to the fence line, it's pretty well cleared out with moments. Well, yeah, that's the Sockville fence line right there. And there were people walking and um, the conversation I had with the ladies that were walking at the time is they were ecstatic and grateful of that something is finally being done.
I would think the folks in the um, mobile home park would feel like it might be a little safer too.
Yeah, so since it has been cleaned up, have we had fewer? Has there, has there been any metrics on if cleaning this up, has it uh, created a uh, environment that's resistant to these interesting fines and questionable activity?
I don't know if we have exact metrics, but I think generally speaking, uh, we've created an environment that is less conducive to mischief.
So not only is it a good fire break, but it's also a mischief break too.
You're not getting plumps of piles of grass clippings and
Yeah, there's still a couple places, but yeah, I did notice that the other day, but it is.
Well, people have to get used to this whole concept. They shouldn't be doing that anymore.
And we are working with the county for more no dumping signs, ways to restrict vehicular access to encourage, that would encourage dumping.
Oh, councillor Skipper.
Thank you, yeah, I think Shannon might have been going that way, but um, I guess my question was, has there been any feedback or follow up with the county commissioner, you know, since they they have been aware of the situation and visited? Has there been any feedback or follow up from them on like future plans for them to help assist in this, um, with it being county owned property? Um, I do applaud the efforts of the citizens and the councillors for doing what they did. Um, I just was kind of curious where the county stance is on, obviously, hopefully they see this as a priority now to maintain the property that they've acquired. Um, and if there's any feedback specifically from them on that.
So our next steps, uh, with, we did meet with the parks director, and we are working with no dumping signs and the restriction of vehicular access, what was the other sign we were looking?
No burning.
No burning, thank you, with um, fines associated with it. Uh, that's what he was able to do, the next step is we're supposed to be arranging a meeting for the county commissioners to actually come out to the corridor to see the work for themselves, because even if we take this to the county commission, pitchers don't do it justice. Of what was done, um, as far as annual maintenance, I can't speak to the county's budget. I know they've had difficulty in budgetary um, maintenance of these areas, so I can't I know they've had difficulty in budgetary maintenance of these areas, so I can't speak to that. I think further conversation with the county commissioners will be fruitful. But I think just by the amount of volunteer outpouring that we had and the amount of dedication and getting the, the resources, I think this is something the city can get behind and make sure that we continue to have defensible fire space.
Oh, I would like to clarify or get it clarified. When the county may have not had the necessary resources to take on this project at this time.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. That's something they've been struggling with for, ever since I've been in Carlton. That is something they have been struggling with is having the resources, whether that's personnel, equipment, or finances.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I think that's been a constant for them too.
And back to the importance of keeping this open, not only for fire, but also for public safety is a couple of years ago, when the county was able to get resources to do some cleanup. And that's another thing is that this corridor has never been cleaned up to this extent before and opened up and gotten rid of the invasives. But a couple of years ago, when they were able to do some of it, we did find stolen goods on the corridor and we were able to, our police department was able to match the owner with the stolen goods as well as solve crime.
Oh, perfect.
But it, it is, this is not a one-time thing of finding a gun case or some, some other sort of mischief.
Yeah.
I have a question. I don't know if it was answered before. I, I don't remember really. Is that a possibility that Carlton could buy that property, especially where we're talking about green spaces and buying things? Is that, is that something that could happen in the future?
It's been an expressed interest of the council and I think that's something we will approach the county about of obtaining a greater ownership of the corridor. I'm not sure what exactly that'll look like, if they're interested in that kind of proposition. But also as a good faith effort, I think we agreed that this cleanup effort would be a show of good faith that we were interested in maintaining this property.
So we haven't asked like how much you would, but you're planning to ask about it.
So where are you, where are next steps?
Next steps is, Council Erickson is looking at another cleanup on September twenty-third.
Yes.
Moving beyond the gray earnings or what area?
No, still in the north sector.
Oh, still in the north.
Still a lot of invasive, the Hawthorne, the trees that need to be cleaned, cut and cleaned in that area.
So maybe next year we'll do the.
Over X, X, X dollars donated. We didn't have just that amount just yet. But over a hundred and thirty hours of volunteer time was contributed from citizens coming as far as Newburgh to come help. So it was great.
That's almost a month's worth of one, one person working eight hours a day. That's, that's impressive. And that was two days of cleanup?
Eight hours.
Eight hours total.
Eight hours. We spent four, four hours each day.
This is impressive.
Oh, they were little beavers out there. They were.
That was the other thing our volunteers were able to bring is when the county has been able to come out, their workforce was limited more mowing or weed, weed trimmers, weed whackers. Whereas Council Erickson had resources that new trees were able to were chainsaws, which were able to make very quick work of some of those invasive tree species.
Plus, we were going back into the boundaries and pulling out stuff that probably had been there a while. Because everybody threw their Christmas tree over the fence. Where else would you put it?
Can I put a plug in for those yard debris containers?
Yeah, we, we did a few of those. Yeah. It was fun. It was a good morning. It was cool. It was comfortable to work.
And you said September twenty-third?
That's the, that's the target date.
Wonderful.
Tentative, so.
And future plans? Future plans?
Um, yeah, just to keep it. Or eventually we'll just start working on the south side. The south side, I think it's a lot more just weed eater type. Cleaning up. It's not as
overgrown.
Overgrown with trees and that type of stuff.
Well, I could speak that when the neighborhood went in because that's, that is technically my neighborhood and I built in that neighborhood. I'm one of the original residents. It was overgrown when those houses were built.
Yeah, most people don't even know there's a railroad bedding there. It's like, what is that thing there?
It used to be operational back in nineteen ninety when I moved out here.
It's amazing that it hasn't been that long.
No, and completely overgrown from when it was used till now.
Blackberry.
Blackberries and Hawthorne trees that are twenty-five feet tall.
No, yeah, some of them at least, at least twenty feet. Did find some good on the north end, there's a really good Italian plum tree that we uncovered and it's got rank fruit on it.
Ooh, yum.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Scoot back out there.
Yeah. Well, yeah, on the twenty-third and you're
Yeah.
away, Linda volunteered to do the paperwork table.
Well, you still got the one week, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
So the following week I'm gone.
Oh, go.
So you got me.
Okay.
So.
Oh, good. I don't get to do it.
Is there any need for breakfast or lemonade or?
Well, the, the last two times around Lowe's provided four cases of water and six cases of Gatorade.
Wonderful.
They, they donated to the project. Parlumber donated safety equipment, gloves, eyeglasses and gear protection.
But could a concerned citizen bring donuts and lemonade if they want?
I was going to talk to the police chief about donuts. He knows I kid you. But that's, coffee and donuts are welcome.
Okay. Because there may be some in the community who may not be able to necessarily do the physical work, but may be able to support in other ways. So, okay.
And Jan and I have talked about a lunch program that I'm still working on that if it comes about will be a good thing, I think, for all of football.
We're talking about a thank you barbecue or something like that for all of the people who volunteered their time.
Yeah.
The waiver needs to cover the barbecue. I'm smart enough to flip burgers.
Okay, great.
You don't want to drop any embers in the mulch.
The barbecue will be down here, not on the corridor. Not doing campfires on the corridor.
Very good.
That does have a ring to it though.
There's all kinds of things you could do with that. I think we best leave it alone. Anyway.
Again, that's all I have for now, what we then do.
Well, the progress is impressive.
Yeah, it looks great.
I think this is, this is one time where I think we could easily say that the citizen's capability far outweighs the government's ability at this point in time because the government's focus is on other places. No, I'm, I'm, I'm not down talking any of our government. It's just sometimes the, the power of the people can be extremely amazing, especially in volunteer, appropriate and volunteer form, so.
And there is some government that was very beneficial here is I told Council Erickson that the staff did not have time to do this, that this would have to be a council-driven project and he took the bull by the horns and got the donations, got the companies to donate their time and equipment and went out on his own time.
And mobilized a, a force of volunteers to get a good, good thing done. So thank you.
Including some bird spotters.
Grant and Karen Hoyt.
Hoyt, yes, I'd written their name down. I was going to tell you.
Because they were the, they were the professional, yeah, they were.
And thank you for watching. Thank you for watching out for our little feathered friends.
Now I have the bird app. And they told me about, oh, that I will use the next time I go out there. Makes life a whole lot easier.
Yeah, but they could understand the language. If it was a nesting chirp or if it was just a, hi, how are you doing this morning?
Yeah, it's all about your time with it. You wouldn't believe, I've been using it just out on my deck. Oh my God, I cannot believe the amount of different birds that show up on that thing.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
So you had more?
I had just a couple of items. You all received an email this afternoon and there's a memo in front of you regarding Cycle Oregon event that is happening this weekend. And given the harvesting and the new planting of the field, they are doing a Plan B in case they are not able to get the RV parking that they anticipated using the field for if it becomes unsafe conditions for the field or for the RVs. They have a Plan B to use a lot that they've gotten the owner's permission for off of Scott Street. And staff is prepared. We've asked for them what their plan is, how many RVs they're planning on putting in there and what times of day. We are already putting a communications plan into place to notify the residents of the neighborhood. We're putting blast out on a next door, out onto the website. We're putting barricades up with information, so we are working with them to get the information out there. I have a question on that field. Can that be accessed when you go up North Scott or do you have to access a different vantage point? Fields. And access that of those dots.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you can.
That's, I think it is. North Scott goes all the way through. Couple houses back in here.
That's the Blueberry.
East over forty-seven.
Correct.
I have noticed that Cycle Oregon has put up significant signage over other bicycling events that have happened. And it's nice to, to have this signage up because people who are paying attention will at least know that there are, there are, there's, there's an event with cyclists to use caution. Appropriate driving, yeah. But you know, for those who've been paying attention, they will know that something's happening then. And I'm, I'm very pleased with their respect to the community and into the commuters, commuters in, in our area by, by dealing with that. That's that shows really good intent on their behalf. So let's stop.
So we will let you know of any finalization of those plans so that if you have any questions. The other thing, actually, I'm going to blend two things in. September twenty-second, the day before the cleanup is going to be the banquet barbecue. This is what council talked about and we will send a council appreciation of staff. So look for your more details in your email. And then at your October meeting, I will be at my annual ICMA conference. And so you will be in the very competent hands of Kristi Marches.
Whoop, whoop.
Making good fun.
Oh, no, there's no goofing off.
I will still be here, so there will be no.
Are you going to be making reports of our?
Yes. Do not make me zoom in.
So we're talking chaos. Chaos and anarchy.
And do you need qualified burger flippers for the twenty-second?
We might. I will be reaching out to you as we formalize details.
I don't know if I'm qualified. I'm more likely to be questionable.
Okay, we'll take questionable.
Okay.
All right, that's all the info that I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I think there is a motion to adjourn.
Third. Meeting adjourned.